Welcome, everybody, to the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees Meeting today, September the 10th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would like to thank the chancellor, all of his staff, and all of the members, and the presidents and their staffs for putting together our board packets for today and for the work session. A great deal of preparation has gone into making these things happen. And, let's see, first on our item, on the agenda is our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So, our invocation today is Pastor John Fleming. He is the Director of Missions for the Bullock County Baptist Association. For 50 years, Pastor Fleming served churches throughout the state of Florida. He served on committees and functioned in several capacities with the Florida Baptist Convention. He retired as the Director of Missions with Broward County Baptist Association. Pastor Fleming moved to Montgomery, Alabama, in 2017 to work with the Montgomery Baptist Association. He currently serves as the Director of Missions at the Bullock County Baptist Association. He and his wife of 51 years, Kay, have two daughters and six grandchildren. At this time, I'd like to welcome Pastor John Fleming.
Thank you. It's an honor for me to be here with you today and to be a part of this gathering. I want to thank you for what you do in our state. I do believe that everybody doing as you do, you're in the ministry. You may not believe that, but trust me, you don't have to be a reverend to be doing ministry. You touch the lives of many people in this area and in our state, and I thank God for you, and it's an honor to be here today and to pray with you as you begin your meeting this morning. Father, we come into your presence right now through the love and care of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. Thankful, Lord God, for your love, your care, and your direction in our life, and we praise you today as this precious group meets, that you, your Spirit, would give them wisdom, direction, and the decisions that they must make, give them joy in the service that they give, and may all of us realize that what we have been given in terms of blessing, we need in turn to turn around and help those who have need. So, guide us in doing that. Bless us as we serve you. We give all honor, all glory, all praise to you, Holy God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, at this time, I'd ask you all to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Ted Schell?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Richard Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston?
Present.
Mr. Lev Lemon Rome?
Present.
Mr. Tim McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Britton Lightsey?
Present.
Dr. Yvette Richardson? Governor Kay Ivey?
Thank you. Board members-
I'm sorry, Dr. Yvette Richardson, present.
John Mitchell, present.
That sounded good. Okay, board members, you've been distributed a copy of the agenda that's before you. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Some move.
Do I have a second? I have a motion from Lightsey, a second from McCartney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 13th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
A motion for Mr. Schell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Houston. Do we have any points of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? All right. Next on our agenda, item number seven, is our college spotlight, Shelton State Community College. Dr. Jonathan Coe.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and Chancellor, and Board of Trustees. It's an honor to be standing before you today in front of my colleagues here, and then also a very important individual that I will introduce here in a moment. But, in the last two years here at Shelton State Community College, I've been afforded with this opportunity, we have been marching through a college-wide initiative that's entitled "Service in Action." And really, what that does is brings our life, our purpose to life, our purpose being the intent and the why we do what we do, right? And I think everybody here would agree. I hear it every day. I'm going to hear it again from Neil Scott a little later today. It's people. It's our purpose is people. It's helping people achieve their potential. It's helping individuals achieve their true purpose, finding a pathway and achieving their goals, maybe even helping them define what those goals are and then showing them how to get there. And there's so many forms that that can take, whether it's working with a colleague, or in terms of warm transitions and handoffs for individuals, refraining, reforming our processes and ensuring that they're efficient and not allowing people to fall through the gaps. We've been laser-focused on making enrollment and registration easy at Shelton State because our purpose is impacting people and providing a better life and helping them realize their potential. And so, you know, at the end of the day, looking at our strategic plan and the vision for the college and continuing to grow as everyone here does and knowing our bottom line, we have been laser-focused on bringing folks from the non-credit side to the credit side because as our mission of preparing individuals for the workforce and understanding our tuition revenue stream, we know that that's critical for the future of the college and the system, and it's very important for the local economies. And so, all of these things, you know, are touchy-feely in a sense, and they relate to the larger picture of helping individuals and just achieving our overall mission. But, a lot of that is not really possible without partnership. I tell our folks all the time that partnership is where we have that strategic enrollment growth, where we develop that community, where we find batches of individuals that we can help and support and help identify their goals and achieve their goals. And one particular partnership I talk about a lot that we have is through our adult education program. And we've learned how to leverage federal financial aid, talking about Pell Grants, by accessing the ability to benefit provision for federal financial aid. And what that is, is about a six-hour gap where you show that you can be successful in a college course while you're working on your GED. So, prior to earning your GED, you can take college courses, and if you are successful in six hours, then you can qualify for federal financial aid. So, we've been leveraging our scholarships and our resources as we develop them to put into this program so that we can help students achieve that six-hour gap to then access their full potential of federal Pell. And one of those unique partnerships that leverages what we call co-enrollment, it's a little bit of a different flavor than dual enrollment, so it's GED co-enrollment, right? And one of the partnerships that we leverage is our, that makes a huge impact in our community, and we have impacted dozens of students already, is the partnership with the Juvenile Detention Center at Shelton State. And in Tuscaloosa County, we have a juvenile detention center that is, we are in, we have a whole dorm cell, if you will, that we are in. It's called the Leadership Dorm. The students have painted it green, the handrails on it, they've got signs and posters up that they've done, and we are in there every day doing GED services, doing actual college courses in this juvenile detention center, and it's making a big difference. And one particular student I'm so proud of that I brought with us here today, and I would love for him to tell his story to you all. We met him at the juvenile detention center, and through the work of our adult ed director, Kristen Bobo, and her compassion, her empathy, her hard, tireless work ethic, and her genuine, motherly care for these individuals, has really created that pathway for them to come and feel comfortable, have that sense of belonging at Shelton State, as they go on past earning their GED, towards earning their associate's degree and even further. One individual here, Dalton Peters, who I'll call up here in a moment, we met him there, and I'll let him tell you his story, but the best part of it is that not long ago, we hired him on full-time at Shelton State. He's now our Educational Pathway Specialist in helping other individuals in a similar position move through the co-enrollment process and into the associate's degree majors and programming that we have offered at Shelton State. And so, it's all about intentional pathways. It's a purpose-driven service culture that we're creating here, and partnerships and programs like this are great examples of that. And so, I'm so excited to share with you guys that kind of little bit of a tidbit of what we're doing at Shelton State, and I think that Dalton Peters here, as he speaks, will really bring that program to life, and I hope that you guys appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to start by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to stay in here today and share my story. My name is Dalton Peters, and I'm proud to say that I'm not only a graduate of Shelton State Community College, but I'm also now a full-time employee. But if you had met me a few years ago, if you'd met me a few years ago, you might not believe I'd be standing where I am today. I grew up with very little. There were times when I didn't... There were times when I didn't know if the lights in our house would stay on. I often wondered if we'd have food on the table. Life was hard, and as a child, it felt like there was no clear way out. But through it all, my mother always told me one thing. If you don't want to live like this forever, you have to get an education. She used herself as the example, and she'd say, "Look at me. I didn't get an education, and now I can't get a good-paying job." You can change this story. But like a lot of young people, I didn't listen. I goofed off in school, my grades were terrible, and then my stepfather had passed away, and I spiraled. I started using drugs and alcohol at a young age. School became even less of a priority to me. I skipped classes, got into trouble, and before long, I found myself in some serious legal trouble right after my 16th birthday. They told me I had to get my GED, but I treated it like a joke. I lied and said I was working on it, but I wasn't. I continued down a dangerous path. It wasn't until just after that I turned 18 that I got into more trouble, and I was sent to juvenile detention center. While I was in there, I kept asking myself, "Why me?" But deep down, I knew why, so I started reflecting on everything my mother had ever told me, and for the first time in my life, I really listened. This is when I decided to make a change. I asked if I could enroll into Shelton State, working toward my GED. They accepted me into a structured program that required me to be there from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Thursday. It wasn't easy, but it gave me structure, it gave me purpose, and most importantly, it gave me a second chance. After earning my GED, I enrolled into Shelton State as a college student and became, began working towards a degree in psychology. I had finally found direction, but I also found something else, a community that cared. I fell in love with what Shelton State could do for someone like me, so much that I asked if I could work there. I started work through work-based learning, doing small tasks like scanning papers and making copies. Then I became a part-time support staff member. And that's when everything really started to change. I met Kristen, who took me under her wing and mentored me every step of the way. For the last two and a half years, she taught me not just the world of adult education, but how Shelton State works as a whole. She saw something in me and invested in it. Today I stand here, today I stand here as a full-time Educational Pathway Specialist. I get to help others who are in the same shoes I was in, and I do it with pride, with purpose, and with the same support I was given. The moral of the story is, at Shelton State, the staff will meet you wherever you are in life, no matter how broken, lost, or behind you may feel. They will work with you, walk beside you, and never leave your side. Even after you've earned your GED, your degree, or your certification, they don't stop caring. They help you take the next step, whether it's transferring to another university, getting a job, or simply just becoming a better version of yourself. They're there for you. In closing, I'm living proof that Shelton State does not just provide education. It provides transformation. It turns setbacks into comebacks. It turns lost causes into leaders, and it turns students into staff members, mentors, and contributors to the community. So, when we talk about the impact of Shelton State, you're looking at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I don't know if anyone noticed, but I failed to mention our mission statement in my opening, and I was sitting there regretting that I didn't do that, but that was our mission statement right there. That was absolutely wonderful. Congratulations. I'm so proud of you. Moving on to business, we are under Agenda Item Eight, Executive Legal and Public Information. Action Item A is, we are going to move to Enterprise State Community College for the review of their mission statement. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the mission statement of Enterprise State Community College. Do I have a motion?
Some move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion for Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. McCartney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
Item 8A2 is Marion Military Institute's mission statement. It is recommended that the Alabama Board of, Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the mission statement of Marion Military Institute. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
A motion for Mr. McCartney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
We're going to move back to Shelton State now for their mission statement. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the mission statement of Shelton State Community College. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
Item number 8A4, Calhoun Community College, naming the Advanced Technology Center. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board authorize the president of Calhoun Community College to name the Advanced Technology Center on the Decatur Campus as the Gene Haas Workforce Training Center and to add appropriate signage. This fiscal consideration is a $1 million gift from the Gene Haas Foundation. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
A motion for Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Houston. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
All right, we are going to move on to Item Nine, Instruction, Research Development, Adult Ed Facilities, Fiscal Information Technology, and Workforce Development. 9A1, we are going to move over to Drake State for an increase in a special building fee. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System authorize Drake State Community and Technical College to increase its special building fee from $15 to $20 per credit hour. This increased fee will take effect spring semester of 2026. It is estimated to generate an additional $100,000 in revenue. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Schell. Do we have any points of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
All right, we're going to move south to Bishop State for an Associate in Applied Science and Aviation Manufacturing Technology. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Bishop State Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science and Aviation Manufacturing to be implemented the spring semester of 2026. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. Schell. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Rome. Any points of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
All right. Item 9A3, Calhoun Community College for an addition of an instructional site. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve an additional instructional site for the Calhoun Community College. Sorry. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. McCartney. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Schell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
All right, we're going to stay at Calhoun Community College, and the next item, Item Number Four, is an Associate in Applied Science and Theater Design and Technology. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System approve Calhoun Community College's application for an Associate in Applied Science and Theater Design Technology to be implemented at the spring semester of 2026. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Houston. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
Item 9A5, Reed State. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Reed State Community College's application for an Associate in Arts, a transfer degree, to be implemented the spring of 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
I have a motion for Mr. Schell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote.
Ah.
All right, we're going to stay at Reed State for additional transfer degrees, and it is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Reed State Community College's application for an Associate in Science Transfer Degrees to be implemented at the spring semester of 2026. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
A motion for Mr. Houston and a second for Mr. Schell. I have a motion from Mr. Houston and a second from Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. Okay, now this, we're going back to the system level. Item nine A seven, allocation of the fiscal year 2025-26 Industry Certification Initiative Funds. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the chancellor to provide scholarships for the 2025 Skills USA Alabama Competition Winners who are entering or have entered post-secondary education. This fiscal consideration is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that comes out of the Education Trust Fund Industry Certification Initiative Funds. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey and a second from Mr. McCartney. Excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. Allocation of fiscal year 25-26 Industry Certification Funds. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize its allocation of a portion of the 25-26 Industry Certification Initiative Funds as outlined below. Seven million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. The following projects have been approved, and there is a list of projects per college that you have before you for this seven point six million dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. Motion passes. All right, item nine A nine, we are still at the system level. Allocation of 25-26 Industry Certification Initiative Funds for this is for our existing industry training program. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize the chancellor to distribute through grants the sum of one million dollars from our legislative appropriation for industry certification initiative funds to support existing industry training. Individual grants awarded by the chancellor shall be limited to a maximum of fifteen thousand per training project with an annual limit of sixty thousand for each company for the purpose of providing training for existing businesses. The chancellor and his staff are authorized and encouraged to use all appropriate means to expedite the award of these grants to timely meet the needs of our existing businesses. The fiscal consideration is one million dollars. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Shell and a second from Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. All right, item nine A ten, we're still at the system level with industry certification funds. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize the chancellor to distribute two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in industry certification initiative funds from the current legislative appropriation through grants to address immediate workforce development training needs. It is also recommended that the chancellor be authorized to reallocate any unused funds from the previous fiscal year for the same purpose. Our fiscal consideration is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Houston and a second from Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. We're now going to move to Coastal Alabama Community College, item nine A eleven, to the Baymanet Campus for Fort Cruz renovation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with the project named Baymanet Campus Fort Cruz renovation. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December the first of this year, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Shell. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. McCartney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. The motion passes. Item nine A twelve, Bevel State Community College. This is the Jasper Campus Purchase of the Nito Property. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with the project named Jasper Campus Purchase of the Nito Property. Closings shall be executed no later than December the first of this year, or this authorization shall expire. Our due diligence period is now, and then our closing is hopefully September the thirtieth. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion from Mr. Lightsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Houston. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. All right, moving on to Lawson now, item nine A thirteen. This is at Lawson State, the Birmingham Campus Building A renovation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Lawson State Community College to proceed with the project named Birmingham Campus A renovation. Construction contract shall be executed no later than December the first of this year, December the fifteenth, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
Some move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Rome. Do we have any points of discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. Item nine A fourteen, we are moving to Enterprise State Community College to the Geneva Campus for the Armory Renovation for Workforce Technical Education. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize Enterprise State Community College to proceed with the project named Geneva Campus Armory Renovation for their Workforce Technical Education, GTech. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December the first of this year, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion from Mr. Shell and a second from Mr. Lightsey. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. All right, moving along to Jefferson State Community College. This is the Clanton Campus Property deed of gift to Chilton County Board of Education. It is recommended that the ACCS authorize Jefferson State Community College to proceed with the project named Clanton Campus Property Deed of Gift to Chilton County Board of Education. Closings shall be executed no later than December the first, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. McCartney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. And finally, item nine A sixteen. I don't know if I'm going to be able to read this whole resolution. My voice is going in and out. This is the Alabama Community College System, Alabama Maritime Consortium, Blue Forge Alliance Resolution. Mr. O'Brien, do you mind reading that for me, please? Thank you so much.
Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System was established by Act two fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, one twenty-five of the Alabama Legislature and approved by law by the governor of Alabama on May five, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas pursuant to the act, the Alabama Community College System was created and is now governed by the Board of Trustees created by the act. Whereas the act authorizes the board to appoint a chancellor who serves as the chief executive officer of the ACCS to assist the board in carrying out its authority and responsibility. And whereas the United States Navy has launched a program to expand and strengthen our nation's shipbuilding capacity and defense readiness. Blue Forge Alliance is the prime contract holder for this critical Navy initiative. And whereas Blue Forge Alliance, the United States Maritime Industrial Base, and the U.S. Navy have selected the Alabama Community College System and four of its member institutions, Bishop State Community College, Reed State Community College, Coastal Alabama Community College, and Hurley D. Wallace Community College to participate in the program under the proposed subcontract with Blue Forge Alliance. And whereas, under the proposed Blue Forge Alliance subcontract, it is contemplated that the ACCS and consortium colleges will receive funding in an amount up to thirty million dollars to be used for including, but not limited to, facilities, renovations, and equipment purchases at each of the consortium colleges, enabling the colleges to enhance and expand their submarine manufacturing and shipbuilding training programs. And whereas pursuant to the authority vested in the chancellor under the act as prescribed by the board's policies, the chancellor has the authority and responsibility to subject to the approval of the board for the operation, management, and improvement of the community and technical colleges, including, but not limited to, the management and supervision of capital improvement programs and expenditures. And whereas, the Alabama Community College System anticipates initiating multiple capital improvement projects which will be bid in accordance with Chapter Two of the Public Works Law, Alabama Code, Section thirty-nine dash two dash one to fourteen, also known as the Public Works Laws. Whereas pursuant to the public work laws, the circumstances of the bids to be received for renovation projects at the consortium colleges will allow for and permit additional negotiations to finalize the final contract terms and conditions before the issuance of bid awards and/or issuance of notice to proceed for the bid packages of general works, electrical, and mechanical. And whereas, the board has determined that it is in the best interest of the Alabama Community College System and its consortium institutions involved in the above referenced projects to authorize the chancellor and his designees to move forward with the negotiations of the final terms and conditions of the contracts and purchases for the above identified projects, and upon completion of negotiation, to award and execute final contracts to commence the projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the chancellor, in accordance with applicable Alabama laws, rules, and guidelines, is hereby authorized and directed to immediately commence negotiations of the final terms and conditions of the contracts and purchases for the above identified projects, and upon completion of negotiations, to award and execute final contracts to commence the sale.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. That was a very important resolution that I felt we did not need to, or I did not need to butcher. We have before you this resolution. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Mr. Houston and a second from Mr. Shell. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or a voice vote. The motion passes. Thank you. We are going to move on now to item ten, Personnel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Human Resources Department, and it's my pleasure to introduce the latest additions to our staff. First of all, we have Mr. Christopher Mullins. Christopher, would you stand? Chris is our new Director of Software Engineering. He comes to us with over twenty-five years of experience in information technology in the federal and state government and higher education. He served as an application developer at the University of Alabama in Huntsville. He's also worked for the Department of Defense, Motion Industries, Axion Health, and the U.S. Department of State. He most recently worked for the ACCS on a contract basis as a senior software engineer. He has a bachelor's degree in information systems management from the University of Maryland and numerous IT certifications. He also served in the U.S. Navy for ten years, so thank you for your service. And he is based at our Innovation Center. Thank you, Chris. Santiago Sersosomo. Santiago comes to us with ten years of experience in IT. He served as a language data analyst and associate test engineer and a software developer at various locations in Buenos Aires. He has experience working with artificial intelligence as well. He most recently worked for the ACCS on a contract basis as a software engineer. He has a bachelor's degree in computer science from the University of Buenos Aires, Argentina, and numerous IT certifications. He is also based at our Innovation Center. Thank you, Santiago. And Stephen Whitlock. Stephen? Stephen is our new Regional Project Facilities Director. He comes to us with over twenty-five years of experience in facilities management, both in higher education and the private sector. He has served as Housing Director for Mississippi State University and the University of West Georgia, and as property manager for the Cardinal Group in Carrollton, Georgia. He most recently served as Regional Facilities Manager for the University System of Georgia, where he led facilities operations for six campuses and trained campus facilities directors. He has a bachelor's degree in psychology from Eastern Illinois University and a master's in technology management from the University of Alabama in Huntsville. And Stephen is based at our Southern Union Wadley Campus, so please help me welcome these wonderful people to the staff.
Welcome to the team. Any other matters under Personnel? Not, we'll move on to item eleven, the checkers reports.
And I'm going to call on Neil Scott, as I usually do.
Well, good morning. Thank you for, for your service to our community college system, and thank you for, to our presidents for being here and for the tireless work that you have put into, to this fall and making sure that the beginning of the fall term has been a success. And it has been a success. We, I have a very quick enrollment update for you today. We are only looking at one specific term. We're looking at this fall term that is still active. It has begun, but we do still have students registering for the second mini-term. And so we expect these numbers to fluctuate just a little bit more over the next couple of months, but, but I think we're getting close. As of September ninth, as of yesterday, our colleges have enrolled over ninety-five thousand students in, for, for credit courses. Ninety-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five students, to be exact. That is a seven point nine percent increase year over year. That's over sixty-nine hundred more students, and twenty-one of our colleges are showing a headcount increase for this fall. Those students are enrolled in eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirteen credit hours. That's a seven point four percent increase year over year, and over fifty-five, almost fifty-six thousand more credit hours than were being produced at this, at this time last year. And again, twenty-one of our colleges are showing an increase in fall credit hour production. Again, this is a very brief update, but please don't let my brevity imply the, imply any insignificance in these numbers. These are big numbers. These are, this growth is something that is to be credited to our colleges, our faculty, and our staff. There's just been a lot of work that has been done to make this happen, and we look forward to seeing the final numbers for this fall. But we're so excited for these individuals who are taking advantage of what it is that our community colleges offer. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Just a kind of an initial discussion. It's not even a discussion, just a report, I guess. As you know, we've had some conversation previously between ourselves about prison education. And we've been looking seriously at it, along with other people in state government. Over the course of the next several months, there's been a task force appointed with membership from almost every agency that in any way touches the whole issue of from almost every agency that in any way touches the whole issue of the penal institutions and other workforce training opportunities. We will be participating along with the other members of the task force. And this is something that has reached a level that the legislative body is very interested in. As we have said all along, our mission, to the extent that we possibly can be, is from the time a student or a person is incarcerated. Again, if we know that they are at some point going to be out of confinement, start a process to determine what we can do to provide a training program so that they will, upon completing their sentence, have a skill and know that there's a job rather than just walking out in the cold without some opportunities. This is going to be an expanded study dealing with pardons and parole as well. So I just wanted to make the Board aware that we are participating. We have myself and two other members that are involved in adult education and prison education. And we'll be keeping you posted as we move through this process. But I think it, the mission is to do something that can bring about a positive impact on those people who, for whatever reason, there may be incarcerated. Once they have served their time, that they can go out and be comfortable that there is a life outside that could be productive for them. And I just wanted to make you aware of this initial effort. It's going to take a while. It's going to touch a lot of agencies in the state government. A lot of agencies are on the board that has been put together to be in advisory position. So I'll keep you posted as we go forward. And I think there's a lot of good opportunity that we can bring to the table and improve what we're doing. Not that we, I'm proud of what we are already doing, but I just want to look at, it's, I look at it this way. People serve their time. If we don't do something to change, they walk out the door, many of them with a pair of khakis, a fly jacket, and $20. You can almost predict they're going to be back because if they have not had the opportunity to be trained, or have a skill, or some other assistance along the way. And I think that's an issue that we want to get really focused on. That's all.
I definitely agree. Do we have any committee reports?
Finance Committee met this morning, just kind of went over a schedule of, you know, events and just things coming up, and upped in on different subjects, but it's on the books.
Okay. Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. Well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System was established by Act 215, 2015, 125 of the Alabama Legislature and approved by law by the Governor of Alabama on May 5, 2015. And whereas pursuant to the act, the Alabama Community College System was created and is now governed by the Board of Trustees created by the act. Whereas the act authorizes the Board to appoint a chancellor who serves as the chief executive officer of the ACCS to assist the Board in carrying out its authority and responsibility. And whereas the United States Navy has launched a program to expand and strengthen our nation's shipbuilding capacity and defense readiness, Blue Forge Alliance is the prime contract holder for this critical Navy initiative. And whereas, Blue Forge Alliance, the United States Maritime Industrial Base, and the U.S. Navy have selected the Alabama Community College System and four of its member institutions, Bishop State Community College, Reed State Community College, Coastal Alabama Community College, and Hurley &amp; Wallace Community College, to participate in the program under the proposed subcontract with Blue Forge Alliance. And whereas, under the proposed Blue Forge Alliance subcontract, it is contemplated that the ACCS and consortium colleges will receive funding in an amount up to $30 million to be used for including but not limited to facilities, renovations, and equipment purchases at each of the consortium colleges, enabling the colleges to enhance and expand their submarine manufacturing and shipbuilding training programs. And whereas pursuant to the authority vested in the chancellor under the act as prescribed by the Board's policies, the chancellor has the authority and responsibility to subject to the approval of the Board for the operation, management, and improvement of the community and technical colleges, including but not limited to the management and supervision of capital improvement programs and expenditures. And whereas, the Alabama Community College System anticipates initiating multiple capital improvement projects which will be bid in accordance with Chapter 2 of the Public Works Law, Alabama Code, Section 39-2-1 to 14, also known as the Public Works Laws. Whereas pursuant to the Public Work Laws, the circumstances of the bids to be received for renovation projects at the consortium colleges will allow for and permit additional negotiations to finalize the final contract terms and conditions before the issuance of bid awards and/or issuance of notice to proceed for the bid packages of general works, electrical and mechanical. And whereas, the Board has determined that it is in the best interest of the Alabama Community College System and its consortium institutions involved in the above referenced projects to authorize the chancellor and his designees to move forward with negotiations of the final terms and conditions of the contracts and purchases for the above identified projects and upon completion of negotiation to award and execute final contracts to commence the same.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. That was a very important resolution that I felt we did not need to, or I did not need to butcher. We have before you this resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
I have a motion from Mr. Houston and a second from Mr. Shell. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Ah.
The motion passes. Thank you. We are going to move on now to item 10, personnel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Charlene Finkelstein with the Human Resources Department, and it's my pleasure to introduce the latest additions to our staff. First of all, we have Mr. Christopher Mullins. Christopher, would you stand? Chris is our new Director of Software Engineering. He comes to us with over 25 years of experience in information technology in the federal and state government and higher education. He served as an application developer at the University of Alabama in Huntsville. He's also worked for the Department of Defense, Motion Industries, Axion Health, and the U.S. Department of State. He most recently worked for the ACCS on a contract basis as a senior software engineer. He has a bachelor's degree in information systems management from the University of Maryland and numerous IT certifications. He also served in the U.S. Navy for 10 years, so thank you for your service. And he is based at our Innovation Center. Thank you, Chris. Santiago Sersosomo. Santiago comes to us with 10 years of experience in IT. He served as a language data analyst and associate test engineer and a software developer at various locations in Buenos Aires. He has experience working with artificial intelligence as well. He most recently worked for the ACCS on a contract basis as a software engineer. He has a bachelor's degree in computer science from the University of Buenos Aires, Argentina, and numerous IT certifications. He is also based at our Innovation Center. Thank you, Santiago. And Stephen Whitlock. Stephen? Stephen is our new Regional Project Facilities Director. He comes to us with over 25 years of experience in facilities management, both in higher education and the private sector. He has served as Housing Director for Mississippi State University and the University of West Georgia, and as property manager for the Cardinal Group in Carrollton, Georgia. He most recently served as Regional Facilities Manager for the University System of Georgia, where he led facilities operations for six campuses and trained campus facilities directors. He has a bachelor's degree in psychology from Eastern Illinois University and a master's in technology management from the University of Alabama in Huntsville. And Stephen is based at our Southern Union Wadley Campus, so please help me welcome these wonderful people to the staff.
Welcome to the team. Any other matters under personnel? Not, we'll move on to item 11, the checkers reports.
I'm going to call on Neil Scott, as I usually do.
Good job.
Thank you.
Just kind of an initial discussion. It's not even a discussion, just a report, I guess. As you know, we've had some conversation previously between ourselves about prison education. And we've been looking seriously at it, along with other people in state government. Over the course of the next several months, there's been a task force appointed with membership from almost every agency that in any way touches the whole issue of the penal institutions and other workforce training opportunities. We will be participating along with the other members of the task force. And this is something that has reached a level that the legislative body is very interested in. As we have said all along, our mission, to the extent that we possibly can be, is from the time a student or a person is incarcerated. Again, if we know that they are at some point going to be out of confinement, start a process to determine what we can do to provide a training program so that they will, upon completing their sentence, have a skill and know that there's a job rather than just walking out in the cold without some opportunities. This is going to be an expanded study dealing with pardons and parole as well. So I just wanted to make the Board aware that we are participating. We have myself and two other members that are involved in adult education and prison education. And we'll be keeping you posted as we move through this process. But I think it, the mission is to do something that can bring about a positive impact on those people who, for whatever reason, there may be incarcerated. Once they have served their time, that they can go out and be comfortable that there is a life outside that could be productive for them. And I just wanted to make you aware of this initial effort. It's going to take a while. It's going to touch a lot of agencies in the state government. A lot of agencies are on the board that has been put together to be in advisory position. So I'll keep you posted as we go forward. And I think there's a lot of good opportunity that we can bring to the table and improve what we're doing. Not that we, I'm proud of what we are already doing, but I just want to look at, it's, I look at it this way. People serve their time. If we don't do something to change, they walk out the door, many of them with a pair of khakis, a fly jacket, and $20. You can almost predict they're going to be back because if they have not had the opportunity to be trained, or have a skill, or some other assistance along the way. And I think that's an issue that we want to get really focused on. That's all.
I definitely agree. Do we have any committee reports?
Finance Committee met this morning, just kind of went over a schedule of, you know, events and just things coming up, and upped in on different subjects, but it's on the books.
Okay. Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay. The date and location of our next meeting, we will, let's just roll into our work session. I'll, well, I'll give like a five-minute break between this and our next meeting is at Drake State on October the 8th at 10:00 a.m. in Huntsville. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We are adjourned.
[coughs]
Okay.[1611.13]